...at 9:00 AM this morning that Commissioner Blue provided over for me. And so Commissioner Jackson and Commissioner Blue had one case, it was a little bit of a controversial case, and so they must be running over, but they surely are probably back on their way back over here, and so we will start as soon as the two Commissioners get back here. And I thank everybody for being here today. We've got a good crowd, and I think we've got some good meeting items that we'll be discussing today.
...with centerline delineator posts.
It's a tongue twister.
Does that just keep them centerline painted? What is that?
It's for the Holder Road project.
Oh, yeah.
But instead of putting in, we can't put in permanent medians at this time, so it's similar to like when you see an HOV lane or something at the airport, there's a plastic curb that goes down, and then you have delineator posts that have private的东西around the top to help essentially to act as traffic calming for that area without actually putting in traffic calming.
Okay.
That's what they look like.
Yes.
So we have ITB 2024-10, sereline delineator posts. This is a purchased, sorry, she has toes. The ITV was issued and was sent to 44 potential bidders. This is a one-time buy. We received one proposal from Streetwise Incorporated, which is from Grandview, Missouri. We have worked with them before, and so Highway Administrator and I agree that we recommend to award to Streetwise Incorporated the lowest and best overall provider.
Very good. Any comments or questions concerning this project?
I have none.
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of awarding?
I make a motion that we make do that award as been presented desk by Ms. Hopkins.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So passes. Thank you very much. The next one, too.
So the next one, so the next one is a contract renewal. It's an annual agreement for engineering services. There are four engineering companies that we currently have had on contract for several years. Cook Flat, Strobe Engineers, Great River, Olson, and Own, and Own used to be Anderson. They all have offices in Springfield, so our recommendation is to renew the contract with all four engineering firms for one more year.
Any comment or questions?
Any significant increases?
I think there is a 3%.
From one of them?
Yeah, there's a 3% for their hourly rates.
And the others remain the same?
Yeah, but the work authorizations are negotiated individually and at the time, so.
And because we have four different choices, you and your department and us can help make the best decision.
We've used them for quite a bit. We are using all four for our western water improvements. We're using a couple of them for, you know, the new bridge design projects. I think Bridgers Group is one for some ADA compliance issues, and so it's open to anyone in the county that needs any survey engineering or design and conception services.
Okay, I would accept a motion to approve this annual agreement.
I would make that motion to renew one year with all four companies.
I second that motion, sir.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kim. The next item on the agenda is Highway Administrator Beals.
Good morning. You and I were talking and speaking. Good morning again. Back in April, the Commission, we had awarded projects to five of the special road district groups. That was kind of the pre-award, which set off the process for us to then draft IGA's, get those sent over to those groups, get signatures, and then this is the point at which they are being brought back to you. So we have Billings Special Road District, who's going to do some annual resurfacing, some hot mix projects. I think it's approximately six miles that they are completing. Ozark Special is going to be doing North Fremont Road, which is from Ozark West Elementary, almost up to the county line. Solmore Special is going to be doing some chip and seal projects. Stonetire Special, excuse me, is going to be doing some milling and overlining in their district. We do have one, South Sparta, I do have a request from them. Their original proposal was requesting $30,000 to do a district-wide crack fill project. However, they had some significant damage on Ash Street. I believe it was April 27th when we had the, one of the largest rains that we've had this year so far. They had some damage to that street, so they have requested an additional $70,000 to go up to the $100,000 max that they can request to address both the district-wide crack fill and the flooding damage that they had on Ash Street. So what I told their board was that I would present both to you today, and if you had any questions. And then we have two separate IGA's depending on which way we go with them. So I'm happy to answer any questions they have regarding any of those groups or any direction that you need.
So if we were to allow the additional $70,000 for Sparta or South Sparta Special Road, is that going to impact us in a negative way with regards to what we need to do?
It is not. It is available in the pool for distribution, so it will not come out of anything C1 or C2.
Okay.
Yeah, or Bridge Fund.
All right.
Commissioner Blue, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm just assuming that you are comfortable with us making this change.
I am. I actually, I went with Mr. Short out to Ash Street shortly after that event to look at it and try to provide some direction, and if it needs assistance, I think that would be a good place for us to provide some funds for them to take care of that issue.
I have no other questions, Mr. Morse.
And I think it's appropriate, you know, the purpose for this is to assist them with those special needs, those special projects. So I would make the motion that we move their additional $70,000 and enter into them, enter into that IGA with them so that they can pull that project off.
Second that motion, sir.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Miranda. You know, I'll just say that that's a blessing we have the sales tax money that we can do that with, and so I appreciate that. I'm glad to help that area of the county.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the Commission confirmation of appointment. Just give a real quick opening review of how this happened. I believe that all three Commissioners interviewed, we had two candidates, two very good candidates, and for the Western Billings, clever position, clever Billings position, and they vote for very good candidates, in my opinion. But individually, we all interviewed them. I did mine by phone from the house when I got discharged last Friday afternoon. I did one Friday, one Saturday, and you guys did yours individually. And then we turned our information over to Ms. Kayla. Questions, answers, all the data that we wrote down is now being given to Ms. Kayla, and she knows who won, but I don't know who won. And so we can just call row. If the Commissioners are okay, we call row, and then each person, each Commissioner can say who they're voting for. Is that, is that something that y'all feel comfortable with that way?
I'm sure that's fine with it.
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Maddie, if you'll call the row, that we're going to tabulate and see how the vote turned out. Okay?
Western Commissioner Hosee Blue?
I, my vote went to Haley Anderson.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson?
John Garrity.
And Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris?
John Garrity. Okay, so two to one vote, very, very close. Just very quickly, the way I did the process on both applications, I had one question at the very end that I asked, I thought might be a tiebreaker, because it's some things that have gone over on in the last year or so, and I felt one person answered it better than the other. But I know that Ms. Kayla Anderson is, because I see her every month at a Wednesday clever changer lunch, and she's very active over in Clever with books and education and working in the library, and so that's a tough, tough call. So that's just a summary of how I interpreted it. Is anyone else want to have a comment, or we're going to move on?
Well, I just, I think that both candidates, I think it's very respectful that they want to be involved in the community and be involved in their government. I mean, it's, our governments are of we the people, and it's so nice to have people that want to be involved and be engaged and be part of the process so that bureaucracy doesn't take control of everything. It's all down to the citizens and citizen-run government. So I applaud both candidates. Haley was an excellent candidate, as well as John Garrity, but it just kind of came down to, you know, some of those interview questions and how the answers were given. So I hope that Haley continues to be engaged and involved in the library system. I think the project that she has, the bookbag project she has, is a great thing and is engaging a lot of people, and hopefully it's well received by the community. So I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, and I, I know in talking to Ms. Haley, Ms. Anderson, that she's worked on a doctorate degree. I always like to see people continue to pursue higher goals and levels, and she's certainly going to be able to do that, and I think she's got an extremely bright future. John Garrity will be the first man on the board. I don't think that's bad to have one man, two women on board. And he's also a pastor and a veteran, and I think those, plus some of the ways he answered the questions were the deciding factor. So anyway, and we will say-
Let me say a word also, please, if I may.
Sure.
Couple things. Number one, most of you that have been with me for almost eight years that I've been here will know this, but I'll say it anyway. This decision has been made by the Commission. Once it's, once it's made, I support it 100%, which means I support John Garrity 100%. So I don't want any mistake about that. Why was I on the other end of that? I only looked at two things. I looked at the application, really it could have been three, but the application slash resume and my interview from my perspective. Ms. Anderson was clearly above in those areas. I thoroughly enjoyed both of you and John. I enjoyed my visit with him, and so I don't want any mistake. 100% supportive, and I think probably Mr. Morse, we still need to have an official motion and second and a vote on this, even though we did the, we did the thing to protect from any sunshine law violations. So I say that to say, knowing what I know, when this motion is made and seconded, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. Because I'm 100% supportive of these other two gentlemen, and that's the way it ought to work, as far as I'm concerned. So I would make a motion that we approve John Garrity for that position on the Library Board. Second.
A motion, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And very good. You know, what I've noticed is here in the, I've been presiding, and I feel very good about this, is the fact that we do not have Commissioners, three of us voting three to zero on everything. It is, it's healthy to have, to have sometimes a Commissioner that sees it a different way. But after the vote's over, for us to be united and support whatever decision is made is also very important. And that's exactly what these Commissioners do, and I try to do, that we stay together after the vote. May not be together on the vote, because we didn't, I didn't, we didn't even know what the vote was, but, but we are together after the vote. Commissioner Blue, you're to be commended, and so would Commissioner Jackson, because I've seen Commissioner Jackson be on the end of a vote or a few votes, and he is willing to accept that vote and work together to make the county better. So, all right? So that's, that's all we need is to talk about that. The next thing, we have Communications, and I think, Ms. Amber, do you have a communication that you wanted to give?
We were, did you want to announce that there are people who's on the bid?
Oh, yeah. One of the things that we wanted to do was that thanks to Governor Parsons, who gave us an email notice yesterday, I don't know what time, right around noon, the entire state is going to have an extra day, state employees are going to have an additional day of holiday along with July 4th. So July 5th, Friday, has been declared a state holiday in Jefferson City. And so therefore, throughout the afternoon, we worked, Ms. Amber and I worked with Judge Johnson, because the court system, we're not over the court system. State's over the court system, so they make their own decisions. And so once they make their decisions, then that's easier for us to make our decision. We also worked with Sheriff Brad Cole. We were working also with- We were working also with Ms. Tooty, our prosecuting attorney, making sure that we could close and not hurt the support that we give to the citizens when we're open. So we will have, our employee, county employees will enjoy two days off. So that's one thing. Is there anything else from HR standpoint? Okay. Ms. Miranda, thank you, and some we've been talking about.
I was going to confirm that everyone could make it to the July 9th special session, but everyone has responded.
Okay. So.
I think, and I sent a message against Kayla this morning to let her get that on the books.
And let the public know what that July 9th meeting is?
Yeah. So July 9th, we are discussing Green Bridge and the reuse of the old bridge. City of Ozark will be here to come forward with their final proposal. So the commission will have to decide if that's acceptable or not. After that, we will be awarding the construction of the new bridge to the recommended contractor. And then Todd has a couple of items regarding the campus. I believe the kind of stormwater site grading proposal and then awarding possibly the architecture contracts. Hopefully I got his items right, but in the ballpark.
On the 9th, is that still 1:00?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Miranda. So I would just say, you know, people are watching this live, are going to watch it later on, there'll be more people watch this meeting later on, that July 9th, especially for all the people who live around the Green Bridge area that's, that's, you know, not been able to cross that way and have to go around is a probably, we're going to have it right here, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's going to be in this, in this room, but it would be, for those people interested, they need to come back and hear that. We're going to be able to hear who the engineering firm, we're going to decide who the engineering firm. So we're getting closer and closer to actually doing something in the ground to get that bridge going. And it's very important to listen to the City of Ozark and see what, you know, see if they changed or approved their proposal of what they want to do with the old bridge because originally they wanted to keep the bridge exactly where it is and just refurbish it for a walking bridge. It sounds like a great idea. I'm still just going to make sure, and we all have to make sure, that the architects and the engineers who are experts, you know, I'm certainly not. And we need to make sure that that 100-year flood that happens more often than 100 years will not knock that old bridge into our new bridge and destroy our new bridge and will be in bad situations. So a lot of good stuff happened that day led by Miranda. So is there a question?
Yeah. Have we by any chance come up with a great memorial name for the new bridge? You know, is there anybody like, a person who's contributed to our city or our county for like 50 years that we can name that bridge after? Has anybody thought about this?
Well, we have had some discussion and mostly just Commissioners having discussions with citizens, not necessarily in a meeting like this. But at some point in time, I would like to, I think that bridge is very historic, but just me speaking, somehow some of the original families out there probably need to be considered how we named that bridge because it is such an historic bridge. But, but yeah, I'm open to, we can, we can have that discussion. I just want to see it get started. But once we know it gets started, we're going to get done.
Commissioner Morris, I think, I think the sheriff's looking up here at me wanting the name of Jackson Bridge, but. No, I have always been under the assumption that it would remain as a Green Bridge.
I think you could name it whatever you like. It will be Green Bridge forever.
Yeah. It's always going to be referred to as Green Bridge.
Just like Hawkins Bridge. And everything hasn't flipped.
Back in the way you end.
Oh, I was just going to say the only other thing, based off the attendance of the last meeting where we discussed Green Bridge, this room was over full. So I would, I would suggest.
We'll have upstairs.
Maybe we go upstairs, plan for it to be upstairs, just to accommodate the crowd because we had people standing in the best of view out here.
Yeah. We won't do that again. So we'll be upstairs. We accommodate much larger.
You're probably through, but I just want to mention that I think we're borderline going into a topic that's not on the agenda. The communications should be very brief, a couple of sentences, but once we start having give and take on naming and whatever, I think we're moving away from, from the communications aspect of that. And that's just to protect the citizens that are not here, did not know we were even going to be talking about that. I think it's better to defer that conversation until the next meeting. It may be over.
Yeah. I don't disagree. But anyway, any, any other business, any other communications? If not.
Not adjourned, you have closed session.
Yeah. We're going to go to recess.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going, we're going into recess. Thanks for being here today. We have a closed session.